The Dyken District guy isn't here tonight, but at the time it was Lynn Pivots, and he's my cousin, and we would go to pesticide class in January. You have to get all this training. And we'd be talking, and like people do instead of listening. Anyway, at the class, and I said, hey, have you ever pulled out that trailer for the, for the, putting the seawall up? He goes, no. I go, you know, we should do that. And so we did that, that October. And then in February of 96, we had the flood. So we actually had everything prepped and we trained, and it was crazy. It was just sheer luck. But it was just funny that we talked about that and then it happened. And so then after that, we tried to do it every three years. And when Grover was here, he did something really terrific. He took pictures of everything, and he made us a manual, because he was part of the emergency response up at Calhoun County. And so he was pretty awesome on that. So, and then, so we'll just get real quick to this last year, with last couple of years, which have been difficult. We laid some guys off in 2020, March. And so our crew is pretty small anyway. We have four guys on the crew, one guy in the park, one guy that's a mechanic and a whiz kid at everything else, which is Gary, of course. And so when they cut my crew in half, that was pretty tough. And somehow we just barely kept our head above water. And then, of course, with all the COVID things that we had to do, that was a little crazy because like everybody else here, it changed from week to week. What, oh, no, you can't do that. Now you gotta do this. And then, and then we had the fires in 2020. The, we'd have jail crews and they wouldn't send them out because the weather was too bad for their lungs. But nope, we stayed out there. And it always cracked us up, too. They'd always send everybody home for the snowstorm. But nope, we stayed out there. And then, and we had another big snowstorm last year, 2021, and with just the three of us, Scott Summers and Tyler Lee and myself, we plowed all the streets. And for three days, we were running pretty hard. They worked eight hours a day. We had to have two people in the truck for safety reasons and keep an eye. So I went with them and ran the map. And they did most of the plowing. It worked 16 hours one day, I think 14 hours another day, and like 13 hours another day. And then luckily, we called in a contractor and have had Matt Reichel come in and help us, too. So, and then we had the heat wave, and she did say 115. My record shows 119. But that was crazy. I've never seen that. But we did have 119 day, 115 day, and 110 day. And, and we have, like I said, 14 list stations. And out of those 14, we had to put, put up pop-ups over 13 of them. And because they have computers in there and they'd overheat after 130 degrees in the panel, and it was getting 150 inside the panel. But putting those pop-ups would at least cool it down to where the stations could work. And then the, the only other thing I'd say is, I've had a couple interesting things here, of course, and I've worked with some really good people. I couldn't do what I did for all those years without the support and help of the crew. And when I was interim Public Works Director, thank goodness Mary knew the numbers because I sure didn't. I'd say, hey, we need to do this. Do we got the money? Yeah, we can do this or that. So she was invaluable at that time. And so again, it does take everybody to, to do that job. And I've really enjoyed myself, though. I kind of found a home at the city for a while, as they like to say. So I miss it a little bit, but I don't miss getting called out at 2:00 in the morning. And I still have a little PTSD when somebody's phone rings that has that same dial tone as the on-call phone, telling you. So I hear that, I'm like, ugh. So, and that last year, too, it was just me and Scott and Tyler on call. And those, those guys had a family and had, and Tyler's young, he likes to go do, so I'd pick the phone anytime because they were getting burned out. And I knew I was getting close to the end of the tunnel. So, so anyway, and they're great guys. Again, all those guys down there, I don't think you could have a better crew or a more competent crew. It's just like for to do my job, I had to have a water treatment plant two license, I had to have a wastewater treatment plant two license, I had to have a cross connection license, I had to have pesticide license. All that takes training, had to go to college after, after work. When we first were getting the licenses, it's a little better now. They send you to more classes and stuff. And, but then you have to keep up on the training. You've got to go to classes continuously. When we had Steve there, we looked at the calendar. It was the boss. It was a little difficult, but he had some points. He said between sick leave, vacation, holidays, and training, we were missing one guy almost all the time. And, and that's true. So it was a lot of juggling. You're being the juggler all the time. So somebody else gets to do that now. So, anyway. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Don't go anywhere.
Oh.
We're gonna start the meeting real quick here, but please just stick around. We've got one more thing for Dennis during the meeting. So if I can get everybody, just hang tight and we'll get started. Oh, okay. So, okay. Just wanna make sure we got at least four. Okay. Yeah, we've got people online?
Yeah.
Maybe. I'm just making sure the computer's not certain. You have them on, Pete?
Yeah.
For whatever reason, I'm not getting any. Okay, I guess we'll.
Are you on ghost meeting?
No, it's not. It's not even firing up for me here. Let's see. It's not working. No, there's power. It's just not turning on. That's fine. We'll just go with yours. What time is it? Oh, microphone. Okay. If I get that going on, we'll take the break and we'll get done with this. There we go. All right. Good evening, everybody. It is Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022. The time is currently 7:06. Apologize for the delay. We were doing a retirement presentation for Mr. Dennis Rip. At this time, if I can get everyone to please silence your cell phones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson, you please take the roll.
Councilmember Rounds. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Rowland.
And.
Councilmember Burke.
All right. We do have a quorum this evening. We've got one council member online, Ms. Rowland. And Mrs. Rounds and Mr. Smith have called out this evening due to illness. Chair accepted motion to excuse them.
Make a motion to excuse the missing councilmembers.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Holland. Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Rowland.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith and Rounds have been excused. Making sure that, because Carol might still jump on. I'm not sure. So, but for now, they're excused. All right. At this time, we are going to move into one more presentation this evening with Mr. Rip. I'm gonna get you, come forward for me, please. First of all, I just want to say after listening to all, all that, that was amazing. But I was a little taken back because I was still in diapers when you started at the city. I, I had just celebrated my first birthday.
Let me tell you one other thing I should have said. Yes. So I mentioned Scott Summers, right? First day he comes to work, he goes, hey, what are all those books up there on the shelf? I go, those are my logbooks. He goes, really? I go, yeah, we put in there every day what we do, so it's documented. He takes one off there, starts looking through it, pulls up a day, he goes, oh, you and Wayne were cleaning list stations on the day I was born. Oh, you're making me feel old.
Lot, lot of history there. Well, we, we miss you and we appreciate everything that you've contributed to, not only to the employees and your coworkers, but also to the citizens of Woodland. We wouldn't be in the position that we're in if it wasn't for you and your knowledge and your, your willingness to train 17, how many was it? Sorry, 17 mayors? To train us on, on what's important and what's not. And then all the public works directors. So with that, here, step on this side for me. With that, we have, I have one small little token, which I don't get to give these out very often. But so this is for you, for your 43 years of service and from a grateful community, we have a key to the city for you.
Thank you.
These are very special. These are very special. So did you want to say anything else?
I should have kept my PW8. I could go into anything.
Anything else?
No, I just want to say thank you for everybody that supported me and the community. And I had a good time doing it. We, we had some adventures over the years, but we'll have to talk about that when I have my retirement party. I'll bring up the, the really good stories.
I don't think you get in trouble anymore. So it's good. And I, I think it speaks volumes, too, to see a, a room full of people that absolutely love you for all the time that you've given to us. So, and thank you to you guys, too, for allowing us to have them. All right. Thanks, Dennis. Thanks for having me. There we go. Let me just stand by everybody online here. We had a, well, why is that starting up? This thing, it like has a mind of its own type. Excel's starting for some reason. I'm gonna try. There we go. There we go. Is it the one, it's the in-session one, right? And join. And you're, somebody's already recording it, right? Okay. Perfect. There we go.
This conference will now be recorded.
There we go. Okay. Now we're golden. We'll let everybody that's staying here grab a seat. Are we muted? There we go. Thank you. Unmuted. Thank you. Where's my volume? There we go. Oh, that's in the speaker. All right. First up here for Citizen Communication for Items Not on the Agenda. First up, we have Mr. Peterson. He's still here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You have the Red Cross proclamation?
Oh, I've got one more thing. Sit down. Hold on. Hold on. Getting a little ahead of myself here. All right. Proclamation this evening. Recognizing March 2022 as Red Cross Month, whereas the American Red Cross is a humanitarian organization that eases people suffering during life's emergencies throughout southwest Washington, Oregon, across the United States and around the world. Our Red Cross Cascade Region Southwest Washington chapter has a long history of helping our neighbors in need by delivering shelter, care, and hope during disasters, also making our community safer with preparedness programs and CPR and first aid training, supporting military and veterans and their families, and providing lifesaving blood to our medical community. Whereas last year, in the Cascades region, more than 3,000 volunteers helped the families affected by over 650 home fires by addressing their urgent needs. Like the fall wildfires devastated our region, volunteers from our area and across the country provided 173,489 overnight stays, 387,590 meals and snacks, 9,955 relief items, emotional support, recovery planning, and other assistance. And whereas the Red Cross continues to carry out the organization's 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering during the trying times of the COVID-19 pandemic, people have stepped up to help others in need, whether it was responding to this year's record-breaking disasters across the country or rolling up their sleeves to give more than 148,500 units of blood in the Cascade region when our country faces severe blood shortage. This lifesaving work is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. Nearly 200 years since the birth of the American Red Cross founder Claire Barton, we dedicated this month of March to all those who continue to advance her noble legacy, and we ask others to join in their commitment to care for people in need. Now therefore, I William Nathan Mayor of the City of Woodland do hereby proclaim March 2022 to the Red Cross Month and encourage all of its citizens to join in its observance. Thank you for catching up, Mr. Boys. Thank you. All right. Citizen Communication for Items Not on the Agenda. Now I, I lost those papers. There we go. Mr. Peterson, now you're up. You have those. I'll take those from you.
Yeah, I got some.
Okay. Oh, there's three seconds. Okay. I'll give you five minutes. What's your color? No, all to yourself.
Hello. My name's Mike Peterson, and that's my wife Cheryl, sitting down over there. We live at 1851 Springwood Street. We are accompanied by some of our riding friends and families. We are here to present the Calhoun County Wield All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance for adoption. Woodland, being a small city with a maximum speed limit of 35 miles an hour, is the perfect candidate for the ordinance. We are avid ORV enthusiasts, along with many other riders in the city. Some are present here tonight. After riding and camping at off-road vehicle riding areas and wield all-terrain vehicle-friendly towns, we have to park our vehicles for periods of time. These vehicles can cost up to $40,000 or more. One of our UTVs are street legal as described in RCW number 46 dot 09 dot 310. We take trips to Oregon, Arizona, Idaho, Utah, and other states with wield all-terrain vehicle-friendly towns and riding areas. Now, Kalama, Castle Rock, Yakalt, and roughly 25 other smaller towns within Clark, Calhoun, and other counties in the state already have a wield all-terrain vehicle ordinance. The RCW for wield all-terrain vehicles and the Department of Licensing and the Calhoun County Ordinance number 19 dash 046 takes care of the groundwork for our city. This ordinance would provide an alternative way to commute within the city and to other nearby communities. Please review all the chapters of the RCW, the Department of Licensing requirements, and the county ordinance. Woodland needs something new and fresh for its citizens. We are asking the city to put the Calhoun County Ordinance number 19 dash 046 on the agenda for adoption to the City of Woodland. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. And I think that you already attended one committee meeting. Was that, which committee was that?
It was Safety Committee.
Safety Committee. Okay, perfect. All right. We've got your stuff in the record here, and we will have a discussion about it at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out tonight and providing this. All right. Next up, we have Ms. Sharon Watt. Good evening.
Good evening. Sharon Watt, I live at 276 Insell Road. I am on the agenda tonight to be approved for the Planning Commission vacancy. But I'm actually here right now to talk about the library because I'm part of the Friends of the Woodland Library. And I want you to know that a new library is on track. It will happen. It's not going to be like the pool. We will have a new library. I can't tell you quite how soon, but things are progressing. So some of you should have gotten a newsletter, I don't know, maybe about a month ago, from the library with some of the upcoming events. We are having a book sale, March 4th and 5th. We're going to be doing it in the basement of the Presbyterian Church. We have usually done it in the community center, but frankly, the rental is too high. And so we get a better deal in the Presbyterian Church. It doesn't cost us quite as much. The other big event that we're having is our Love Your Library fundraiser, which is going to be April 23rd. And I hope you'll all consider joining us. It's at the Red Barn. You know, obviously, we didn't have one last year, but the one that we had in March of 2020 was, I'm sorry, February of 2020, was well-attended and a lot of fun. And finally, I'd like to ask you all to be a friend of the Woodland Library.
How much did you raise at your online event last year? Do you remember?
Yeah, the Stories of the Stars thing?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it was quite 20,000, but it was pretty good for what we did.
Nice.
Yeah. Actually, we had a fairly good fundraising year last year, considering it wasn't a whole lot less than some other years, so.
Good, good. Thank you, Ms. Watt. Anyone else for items on the agenda this evening? Now's your opportunity to step forward. All right. Seeing no one else. Moving on to items not on the agenda, Mrs. Miller. Oh, items on the agenda, sorry. On the agenda, Mrs. Miller. Thank you. God, somebody's got to. Holy smokes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Denise Miller. I'm with the Woodland Chamber of Commerce. I'm the executive director there. I'm speaking today on the item on the agenda for the LTAC approval. So I just wanted to kind of give you guys a couple notes and we just, just, you know, before you. So things I'm, we are working on at the Tourism Center there and the Chamber of Commerce is I am actually currently in a couple different classes educating myself on how to properly target ourselves to different target markets so we can more efficiently and properly market ourselves to other areas other than just Woodland to bring people into Woodland. We will be hosting a meeting to educate the chamber members as well as any other community businesses, why tourism is so important to our community businesses of all shapes and sizes, not just hotels, coffee shops, grocery stores, and stuff like that. That was actually supposed to be this coming Tuesday, but due to scheduling conflicts, we will be rearranging that. So you guys will get additional emails when that is. We are excited that Planner's Days is going to be live and in person this year, and we cannot wait to help them promote that, as well as having an information booth to help people get around our area as well as the surrounding areas. And then lastly, we, the Chamber greatly appreciate our partnership we have with the city, as well as we value the funds from the LTAC funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. All right. Anyone else for items on the agenda? Seeing no one. Moving on to the agenda itself this evening.
Move approved, second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Mrs. Anderson?
Councilmember Rowland?
Councilmember Rowland? Oh, I was down all the way. How about now, Ms. Rowland?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you. Sorry, I, my volume was turned all the way down.
Your turn.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
All right. The ayes have it. The agenda's been approved. Moving on to our public hearing this evening. Chief, is there anyone signed up out there here?
Thank you, sir.
Tell the mayor he'll get you.
What?
I'm working right now for all I can.
All right. The time is now 7:24. We are in a public hearing regarding garbage and recycling rate change. I have no one signed up on the agenda in person. Is there anyone online? Seeing no one to speak during the public hearing on garbage and recycling rate change. The time is now still 7:20. Wait till 7:25. Give it a moment. Just to verify. Time's now 7:25. And we are out of a public hearing. All right. Moving on to reports of City Council. Seeing none. Moving on to reports of standing committees. Finance Committee. Who's the chair of that one this evening?
Um, Monty and Carol were absent.
Okay.
So we didn't really.
Okay.
Do much. Gina put on a nice presentation of all sorts of things. And what I got out of that is our economy is strong in the City of Woodland.
I like it. It's good to know. It's good stuff right there, right?
It is.
Questions for Ms. Holland? Seeing none. Human Resources.
Hi, so, yes.
Go ahead with your report for Human Resources.
So we recommend to approve the updated ordinance for 1502 regarding the police chief proximity.
That will be on.
And we move to refer to City Council, the application process for City Council. And we have a tentative agreement with both clerical and public works, and it will be at City Council at the first meeting in March if it's ratified.
All right. Questions for Ms. Rowland? Seeing none. Mrs. Miller. Chamber of Commerce report.
Hello, Denise Miller, Chamber of Commerce, Deputy Director. Nice to see you all. All right. So things going on in the Chamber. So on the first of March, which is next Tuesday, we have the Week Eight of Legislative Call. And we also have our March meeting, which is leaders. So it was going to be tourism. Now it is going to be leadership in retaining your employees. And that is at 11:30 to 1:30 at Anadote. You can register there. If you would be like to be ahead of the game, I recommend registering ahead of schedule so we know you're coming. And then on the eighth is our last legislative call. It is with Peter. And then on the 15th, we have our networking luncheon at Anadote. And then on the seventh, oh, hold on, let me check my date, because golf course changed. We are having a, a, yep, the seventh of April, we are having an after-hours at Lewis River Golf Course. So come up, meet the new owners, have some snacks.
When was that?
The seventh, it's a Thursday.
Of March?
Of April.
Oh, April.
They're gonna have a live band. I hope the mayor's gonna be able to join us.
It's spring break. I would don't come back to town until the eighth.
We did do a ribbon.
Can you move it to maybe June?
Oh, my goodness. We did have a ribbon cutting with Churchill Mortgage over by the Red Leaf, over there by Walmart. It was, it's a gorgeous building. Go in there, see the littles. It is a dad and his two sons team. It is Kirk, oh my goodness, Kirk's the one I deal with. So Kirk is the one who's all. So, Kirk is the one who's always in the building, younger guy, super energetic. Go meet him, talk to him if you need any mortgage or any information. They do the Dave Ramsey method, which is the snowballing thing for debt. So, make sure you go see them. Other than that, we are still open seven days a week. Snowpark passes are almost done for the year. They've been a great hit. People have been buying them like crazy, which is great. Yeah, that's what's going on with the Chamber. We had our, oh, we had our banquet. And for those of you who are going to make it to the banquet, Act U3, unfortunately, I miss Ms. Holland, but it was a great time. We did do it at Alene. It was the first time we did it there. The room was giant. It was well lit. It was, it was a lot of fun. I hope everybody had a good time, so. That's all I have. So, Citizen of the Year was Susan Humbert. Employee of the Year was Clayton Fraley, and Business of the Year was Fiber Federal Credit Union. And all of those pictures are on our website, as well as the other pictures of the event.
I was just going to apologize for making to the ribbon cutting. I had a very busy day that day, so.
I know, yeah, yes, you did. You had a very busy day.
It's not that I'm trying to skirt my duties. I just, I get called away at times, so.
You were not scurrying your duties, sir. You were handling other duties.
The 7th, I'm just really upset about, because that's, I may have to cut my trip short. We'll see. I'll talk to.
They are very, they are very excited to reopen. Lots, lots going on. I don't want to give away their information. I'll let them be surprised, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming out this evening and delivering a report once a month to us. We appreciate it. Okay. And moving on to my report this evening, I've got a lot. First of all, council retreat, again, I apologize for counseling. I did not realize it was a three-day holiday weekend. I want to look ahead to, I don't want to go too far. And the other two are not here, so I'm looking at the 26th and the 5th and the 12th.
26th, 12th.
Of this month. So, that would be this week, and the 5th and the 12th, as dates is.
This Saturday, I have a surprise baby shower. I know.
So, we're looking at the 5th or the 12th? Okay. The 12th, you're good, okay? Of March, yes. Ms. Rowland, do you have any conflicts for the 5th or the 12th of March?
I mean, right now. That's the 12th of March, is that either one? Or go Saturdays?
Yes.
Either one. Okay. I can do either the 5th or the 12th.
Okay. You're good on that, too? Okay. I'll check with the other two. Okay. City Council vacancy. Mr. Boyce has provided you with some items this evening on the process. Oh, it said the application process and the rules that surround filling the council vacancy. We haven't advertised for this yet, correct?
No, the council rules talk about City Council authorizing the application.
Okay.
Basically, we've been using the application for all boards and committees, like Ms. Watt filled out for the planning commission, so.
And the last time we went through this process, I believe Ms. Rowland was part of it, and that's, I think Mr. Smith was part of that same, same one. Do we have something on here that they need to approve, or are we just looking to?
Well, I guess we're just looking for consensus that you, you're okay with this application, and so, we'll go ahead and advertise it.
We're going to advertise it in the reflector?
It's up to City Council where you want it advertised.
I'd see to advertising the reflector also.
Okay.
So, last time we did the reflector, the website, and I think we put it on our Facebook page.
Any, was anyone privy to the last process that we performed? It's been a while. Anyone up here? Were you here for that?
I've done it.
Okay. Okay. So, I guess we'll just advertise and wait for the applications to come in, and then we'll set some dates for interviews and executive session, and then council can decide, move from there. So, at this point, just so council's aware, you are the.
Is certainly one okay with the two weeks of advertising, or did you want longer or shorter?
Well, I'm pretty sure nobody's going to apply anytime soon, or if you do, you'll get one, because every time you have a vacancy for anything, it takes eons, right?
There are two interested parties I know of.
This is City Council, not a board. It's a little different, a little bit more excitement surrounding it. Don't take offense, Mrs. Miller. I can see out there, ah, I sit on a board.
But to.
We have a hard time getting vacant, or vacancies filled on boards and commissions, but City Council, I think last time we had four, three or four applicants? I can't remember.
So, after you advertise it for two weeks, and then what's the process after that? So, first available council meeting, they'll have?
Right, so the council rules are here, so basically, City Council, the rules indicate they'll interview at an open meeting all of the applicants. So, however many you get, you would interview them. At that time, you can go into executive session and talk about the qualifications of the applicants, and then you need to come out of executive session. The mayor will ask for a nomination, and then you will vote on that nominee, whether or not they should fill that seat.
Gotcha. So, it's immediate?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So, out of curiosity, but it has nothing to do with this actually, is, do they have to, like, so, when you run as a candidate, there's like legalities you have to follow, like filing with the PDC and stuff like that? So, do they, they still have to do that, right? Okay. Okay.
Mrs. Anderson was letting me know that if we authorize the advertisement today, tonight, the first time it would be in the reflector would be on the 2nd, March 2nd, so.
So, if you want to go two weeks?
Yeah, two weeks.
From the 2nd? Okay. So, that would put us at bringing applicants forward the 21st of March to City Council. I think we're still within our timeline for elections.
You got 90 days, don't you?
Yeah. Okay. So, the 21st, you would see the applications come through. We'll probably, I think last time we held a workshop, we went early for interviews, just here at the podium with council, and then we started the regular meeting, went into executive session, and came out and did the rest of it. Okay? So, we will plan on doing that and not schedule anything else that evening. It's a regular business. Okay? Perfect. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Boyce, on that? I mean, good? On that process?
I think we are okay. The only other question might be, we might need to come back to City Council and talk about what interview questions you want to ask. Or we could make some suggestions and mail them out, and if a council member wants to make an adjustment, we could ask that it be placed on the agenda.
Okay. Moving on with the rest of my report. We, I met, we, I, I met with the Calis County mayors, had lunch, got caught up with them. That's a new thing that we're doing, getting together once a month and chatting about city businesses and what's going on up there. Also, met with the Clark County mayors as well. Being in two counties, I get, I get the luxury of meeting with everybody, which is nice. They brought up some, some great stuff, which I pass on to some of our folks here in the community as well. Had a meeting with the IFI Bridge Replacement folks. At some point, they'll be seeking a, well, they'll be putting forward a recommendation and asking council to support that, so at some point, that you may see that on an agenda item or through a committee. Met with the Rotary regarding Scott Hill Park. Let's see, the IFI Bridge Rotary. Met with our, the contractor that's putting in a new communications tower for 911, and sworn our new lieutenant, all that, and our executive team last Monday. Oh, and I met with one of our local contractors here in town, which has some exciting stuff to talk about, so glad I was able to sit down and have a chat with them. Other than that, I think that's all that I have for right now. I'm busy. Mr. Boyce?
All right, I'll keep it short. We've got a long agenda. As Ms. Councilmember Rowland indicated, we've, we met with the Teensters on February 15th, and we came away with a tentative agreement for both Public Works and Clerical. The union will consider ratification either tomorrow or the next day. If it is ratified by the union, we'll bring it to the next City Council meeting and see what council thinks. So, we're very pleased with that. I was guessing at when City Council would want that City Council retreat, so if you look on the agenda, it's at February 26th, so we'll cross that out. And the next planning commission meeting is, is on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, 7:00 PM. And that's all I have right now.
Questions for Mr. Boyce? All right, seeing none. Moving on to consent items.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Holland, Mrs. Anderson.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Consent items have passed. Moving on to action items. Action item G, ordinance number 1507, an ordinance relating to contracting and, I can't say this word, you get me every time. Amending ordinance number 1496, which authorized the issuance of a limited tax general obligation bond to provide funds necessary to, one, acquire real property adjacent to City Hall, and, two, pay the cost of insurance and sale of the bond and providing for other related matters. First and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let council members know, Jim Nelson from VA Davidson is online right now, if there's questions about the ordinance.
Need a motion on the floor first, before discussion.
Move to approve ordinance 1507.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Rowland. Councilmember Chapman?
I have no comment.
Councilmember Rowland?
No comment.
Further discussion? All right, seeing none. Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item G, ordinance number 1507, first and final.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Ms. Rowland?
Hello.
Ms. Rowland?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Your vote on action item G, ordinance number 1507?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
All right. Action G has passed. Moving on to action item H, discussion. City Council rules regarding council member remote meeting attendance.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was unsure how to list it on the agenda, so I put it down as discussion at this point.
Okay. Discussion with no action?
Well, council could choose to take action if they so wish.
So, I'll make a motion to discuss the City Council rule regarding council member remote meeting attendance. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Chapman?
No comment.
Councilmember Burke?
Okay. I wanted to bring up paragraph 1A, telephonic appearances by the council member. Today's a good example where it can be used. If you got a quorum, there should not be, according to the rules here, they should not be authorized to be on the phone unless it's an emergency. Gives you the statements, due to fire, flood, earthquake, city or state emergency, or where there's need for actions by the governing body. So, in other words, that's the only time they should be able to be on the phone. So, I feel that last meeting, we had more than a quorum here, the phone should not be authorized, according to this meeting. Now, I think if you suspend a ruse during that meeting, you can, I guess we can change it if you get a vote of the council. So, I'm going to bring that up, so we need to follow this. If the rules are here, we need to follow them.
Further discussion?
I'd like to say something, if possible.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes. I disagree with Mr. Burke respectfully. In this situation, such as today, where my immune system is suppressed, it wouldn't be safe for me to come in, but I can still conduct city business, and it's an accessibility issue. We are cutting off several people who could potentially run for office, simply because they may have a disability. So, to say that you absolutely have to be there in person when modern technology allows us to do it remotely, so we can continue city business instead of stalling it, I think that we should keep it, because city counselors are humans, and we are members of the community as well. And if we have to make the meetings public, to make it more accessible to our community members, we should be given that same courtesy.
Thank you, Ms. Rowland. Mrs. Holland?
Did we not, during early days of the pandemic, did we not change things? And then this one, we, what, undid it? I'm confused.
Mr. Boyce?
So, council did have a conversation about this early on in the pandemic. We didn't change the council rules, but there was consensus from City Council that during the pandemic, council members could attend meetings remotely. I think the understanding was they were trying to have, make sure everyone could participate.
Right.
But I don't remember exactly which meeting that was at. We could go back and research that, if you like, but.
I believe it was 2020, I want to say it was about April, is when we had that discussion.
When we were no longer allowed to meet in person?
Yes.
Right. And then, due to all the different things and people maybe being exposed and not wanting to bring it in, I thought that was kind of why this went on. Me personally, I mean, I was on, I was on vacation. I was on vacation, and I participated in a council meeting via GoToMeeting on my vacation, because it was, one, it was the first vacation I'd had in five years, but, two, people expect me to do my job on council meeting nights, and so I feel like if I'm sick or whatever, it's better that I'm at home and still participating than not. I mean, seriously, it's, I don't, I really, I mean, if there's a reason behind why we don't like technology, I mean, or is it? I really don't want to be confrontational, but, I mean, if it's the fact that it's the, an individual that we don't like being able to use technology, or is it everybody we don't want to use technology, or, because I don't. Anyway, that's kind of my question, because I'm, I'm, I'm cool with keeping technology. I mean, we video meetings because I held a cell phone for two years to film it, so. Anyway.
Mr. Burke?
Okay, I'm not against any technology or anything. The thing is, we, we approved these council rules, Governor, January 14th, okay? So, this rule is what we approved. So, that's the way it's got to be. If you approve something, if you make a rule, then you've got to follow it. If you want to make a change, then that's what we need to do. We need to go make a change to the rules and have the council vote on it, and then change the rules. But, right now, we have to follow the rules the way they are.
Mr. Boyce, what's the standard procedure right now during a state of emergency with Governor Enzi's orders and allowing elected officials, or anyone for that matter, to attend meetings remote?
The city's required to allow remote access to the meetings. I don't think they mention elected officials in that statement, but I think it's not a stretch to consider elected officials part of the community who need remote access, but, yeah, I mean, we've had city councilors in the past that have had to, have had COVID in their family and have had to stay away from the meetings. But really, at this point, if Council wants to make a rule change related to Council rules, we can prepare an ordinance and bring it to the next meeting.
So, I'd just, I'd like to jump in real quick, though, but we're bound to allow this to occur while we're still in the state of emergency due to Governor's order.
That's my understanding, yes.
I can't see that. There's no use having a book.
Well, there is, when you're in a state of emergency, it's a different story. Well, you actually stated off in there, and in the case of state of emergency, which we're in, the city has been fined once already for violating rules. I don't know that it would be prudent for us to continue violating rules to be fined further. Mr. Chapman?
Well, that's something that's why I...
Mr. Mayor, how do we do, I'm suggesting that we bring this, we have to make a whole new ordinance, or we just bring this ordinance up and change it?
Well, we can change a portion of it, but I guess the mayor and I would need to know City Council's intent. What would you like us to bring in? Do you want to keep the status quo, or do you want to do something different than what the status quo is?
I would like to see, since we've got conflict in the rules, as a, as a change in rules, saying that, you know, that's okay for remoteing in, go-to meetings or something like that, by a modern technology, that you can use that, so all members can drive it, be here effectively, but they still be here, you know, on the phone, or go-to meetings or something like that. If we were, we were, the ordinance like that, I would very much appreciate that way everything's covered.
Mrs. Holland?
So, I know Mr. Randolph isn't here to interpret legalities, but 1.8 of this says that the mayor or presiding officer may approve a council member's appearance at a council meeting via telephone. When action on a measure to be voted on cannot be delayed, but rather requires immediate action or remedy in one of the following circumstances, yada, yada, natural disaster or city or state emergency where there's no need for action by the governing body. In theory, our vouchers that we need approved, that it would be in the mayor or mayor pro tem's hands to approve, or just like whether or not somebody could appear remotely or on the phone, because in theory, our vouchers are something that has to happen or people don't get paid, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm just looking at the angle of which that you could get away from not, because I kind of remember when we had the conversation, and I remember saying, when, I think it was brought up to change all of our stuff because of COVID, and it seemed like a lot of work, when COVID isn't forever, it feels like it's forever, but that it wasn't going to be forever, because then if we changed everything, then we'd have to then, down the road, go back and undo it all. And it just seemed like a lot of justification of printing papers and voting on things. That's kind of what I remember. That's what I remember. I wish Mr. Fredericks was still on Council, because he would remember it verbatim, I'm sure.
I think we just need to see what attorney's going to answer.
Attorney, the answer for what?
Well, I think he's already asked.
Well, we're just talking about whether or not to change the Council rules at this point, correct?
That's it, you could do that?
I think Mr. Burke is getting to the vote that was taken at the last meeting, and does, still doesn't agree with it, and is trying to find a way out of it.
No, I knew you'd use that.
I'm not, I'm just, the one we needed to ask the attorney for, if you want to change the rules, change the rules. What's the attorney need to be consulted for? It's just another bill.
Well, I mean, it takes into consideration the last meeting, too.
Oh, so that's...
Because that meeting was illegal.
Okay, Mr. JJ Burke, I am not going to get into a discussion of whether or not the meeting was illegal or not. The lawyer said that we were fine to go. So, if you'd like to change the rules, now's your opportunity to bring that forward. Further discussion?
So, I guess I'm not clear on the consensus of Council...
I'm not either.
I, oh, here.
We could do the same.
I'm cool with it staying the way it is, just so you know.
And just, please keep in mind, I understand the need for the change, but also understand that we also have constraints from the state. I'm not quite sure what we're voting on. Excuse me.
The vote was to discuss the...
When the pandemic is over with, then it forces the people to be, we can't remote in?
Yes, the way it's written, that is correct.
That's why, so, is that what we're going to do? I wanted to hope to bring up, because we were, where people can remote in if they need to in the future.
Then you might...
And we've got two that agree to that.
So, Mr. Boyce, are you just needing to be directed to craft some new terminology, and then...
Right, so I guess what I'm wondering is, if you want, first, do you want to change the Council rule? And if so, do you want it to be, you know, the status quo that we have going right now, or some other direction?
Gotcha.
Well, I think so people have a chance to still be on the phone, be here, but still remote in, or remote, you know, and still talk.
The only thing I see about that, too, is if we start letting them remote in there, if some people don't want to be here in front of the citizens when they make a vote, they need to be on the telephone.
I think that there's still two other councilmembers that are not here to give a consensus this evening, and maybe we should kick this over to a committee. That's what my recommendation would be for discussion.
Which committee?
Second.
You can't do that.
I didn't do anything. I think she misunderstood what was going on.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did misunderstand.
No, you're fine. I would recommend sending it over to General and Finance Committee. I would think so.
Yeah, I'll make the recommendation.
So, I think first, we need to take care of the motion on the table.
What?
Discussion.
There's a motion on the table, discuss.
Oh, oh.
So, any further discussion on the discussion? Mrs. Anderson, please take the vote.
What are we voting on?
To discuss.
To discuss? We already discussed.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
To close the discussion.
Am I taking a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
All right, discussion's closed. Moving on to action item I, ordinance number 1504, an ordinance amending Woodland Municipal Code 2.48.020, requiring Public Works employees to reside within 30 minutes travel time to the Woodland city limits. Final reading.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Rowland, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Rowland?
The only comment is, I think it's a good idea to help expand that area. That way, we can get, we can keep the most qualified people available. I think my wording was mixed up there. But just opening that up to 30 minutes, I think that's a good decision.
Councilmember Chapman?
I concur.
Further discussion? Mr. Burke?
We just changed the last meeting to 20 minutes. Why did, why did we change it to 30 now?
No, we didn't.
Oh, is this the...
That was a different contract.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing nothing else, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on ordinance number 1504. Final reading.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Action item I has passed. Moving on to action item J, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Burlington Northern Southern Fay for the West Scott Avenue Railroad pedestrian crossing, CAP-21-03.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
We need to get done.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, it's a great thing, getting a pedestrian crossing right across the railroad, and the railroad's working with this. It's probably very helpful.
Further discussion?
Oh, I would like to mention that this is where Tracy, Ms. Coleman, got the money. It's grant money, correct?
Way too bold.
Okay, just so everybody knows, the grant money, if you don't know what a grant is, is other agencies take your tax dollars and give it back to people in the form of a grant, which it's free, so local taxpayers don't have to see an increase in anything, and the city doesn't have to pay it back. So, it's a good thing.
That's a jump over three.
This is small, Matt.
Anything further? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item J, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Burlington Northern Southern Fay for the West Scott Avenue Railroad pedestrian crossing.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Action item J has passed. Moving on to action item K, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Lower Columbia, other known as CAP, for utility assistance program.
Move to approve.
Move to approve, second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, second by Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Holland?
This is a way for folks in the community to access some of the money that was the county commissioners granted to CAP. Woodland doesn't often see extra funds, so it would be a way to utilize those for lower-income folks that need help with their utility bills.
Councilmember Burke?
I agree with it.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item K, authorize mayor to sign agreement with Lower Columbia CAP for utility assistance program.
Councilmember Rowland?
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Action item K has passed. Moving on to action item L, authorize mayor to waive the rental fee on Community Center for Planters Days committee meetings.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
I think they should let them do it, if they need to use it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, I agree with this. I think it's a good faith, the city looking forward to helping with the community and stuff, and helping the big 100-year Planters Day kickoff, so it's one way to help out.
Further discussion?
So, this is just for this year, though?
Yeah, four meetings.
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item L.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Action item L has passed. Moving on to action item M, as in Mary, Resolution 744, amending Resolution 715, general fees and charges.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
I went through it really good, and I think it's okay.
Councilmember Chapman?
No comment.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item M, Resolution 744, amending Resolution 715.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Action item M has passed. Moving on to action item N, ordinance number 1501, garbage and recycling rate change. First reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
I went through that, too, and it was 86 cents a month, I believe, 89 cents, something like that, so, that's it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, basically, if I understand it, this ain't us, this is coming from the waste management, so it's just a pass-through, so it's not us folks, so...
Further discussion? Mrs. Holland?
Waste control gets a cost of living increase, and it just gets passed on to us, that's all it is. It's a pretty low cost of living increase.
All right, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item N, ordinance number 1501, garbage and recycling rate change. First reading.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Action item N has passed. Moving on to action item O, ordinance number 1506, complete streets. First reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Holland?
This, Ms. Coleman needs this, so she can, what is this?
She needs a lot more than this.
I know, sidewalks, it's, sorry, safe sidewalk access for kids around the schools, if I remember correctly. So, that's what this is.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, it's just Public Works doing the great things to make Woodland a better place.
So, you want me to give a little update on what it is?
Ms. Coleman?
Okay, so, it is, well, we apply for grants, this is one of the components that's needed in order to get a grant, and so we score higher on grant applications, and also when people come in to develop within the city, it doesn't give them the grounds to be able to negotiate, say, I'm not going to complete the front, the fronting improvement on my lot, we're going to say, no, you need to provide safe pedestrian access for bicyclists, motorcyclists, just regular people walking, and cars when you develop that lot. So, it keeps it from being able just to have a vacant lot developed with nothing going on around it, to provide safe access in and out of that car lane. So, it just completes our, it completes, so when you hear about that, you're not going to see missing sidewalks everywhere, you're not going to see, you know, missing area for bike lanes, so that's what the intent of this complete street ordinance is for, scoring higher, to really make our city step it up a notch.
Mr. Burke, you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item O, ordinance number 1506, complete streets. First reading.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Action item O has passed. Moving on to action item P, SMA-22-002, lift station back project. Final package.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
That's a regular maintenance, you can get, keep them up, keep them working, so we don't have to replace them.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yeah, same, it's the same, it's all been budgeted in and everything and stuff, so it's normal. Preventive maintenance to keep everything flowing like it should.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item P, lift station back project.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Action item P has passed. Moving on to action item Q, SMA-22-003, community center building siding and roofing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Holland?
This has been a project that's been in the works for a while for Public Works, but COVID kind of derailed it a little bit, but the community building is looking for a facelift, that's what this is. So, I think the last facelift, I was probably in high school, I'm not sure, a long time ago, so...
Councilmember Chapman?
I agree, yeah, it's a nice time to get this thing, get her freshened up and looking good for the summer coming.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item Q, SMA-22-003, community center building siding and roofing.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Action item Q has passed. Moving on to action item R, authorize mayor to sign legal services agreement with Randolph Law Firm.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke? Moved by Councilmember Burke, second by Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember Burke?
That's a book, we've got to have it.
Councilmember Chapman?
I can see why you didn't show up tonight.
Further discussion?
Glad you said that, no.
Seeing nothing else, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item R, authorize mayor to sign legal services agreement with Randolph Law Firm.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Rowland?
Something happened, aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Action item R has passed. Moving on to action item S, adopt ordinance 1503, 2021 budget amendments, first and final reading.
Move to approve the amendment?
Second?
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Chapman?
Oh, yeah, this is the final amendment to close the books on 2021, if I understand it right and everything, so...
Councilmember Burke?
No comment?
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Anderson, please take the roll on action item S, adopt ordinance number 1503, 2021 budget amendments, first and final.
Councilmember Rowland?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Action item S has passed. We've come to the end of our meeting.
Move to adjourn, second?
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, second by Councilmember Burke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Rowland?
Aye. I said aye.
Anyone opposed? The time is 8:10. Thank you, everybody.
This conference is no longer being recorded.